With Gwen Asma Edwards on the Live Radio.
You can never know what you might be asked and I want to have factual information. It's not just... So you're a vision in plan today, aren't you?
Your graduation vision.
Stan, you've been sitting much too long, much too long. Welcome, 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 welcome to Truth, a radio program designed with you in mind. A program whose sole purpose is to empower you, our listeners, for information leads to knowledge and knowledge is, you got it, power. And as always, I want to empower you to take control of your life. Those things that impact you, your family and your community, as always too. Why don't you go to the website at www... www... Big John's song, music almost, equipment asleep. But www.gwenhamandtruth.com so you can access all of those resource listings that will link you to the important information that can make you feel oh powerful. As has been stated, I'm Gwen Asma Edwards, former city commissioner, retired city clerk, city of Daytona Beach and president, CEO of AE Enterprises, Inc., a consulting firm on politics and ethics. Want to do a couple of shout outs. Shout out to Crime Stoppers who had their annual community banquet recognizing law enforcement for the wonderful job that they do. Want to definitely do a shout out for them. Want to do a shout out as well for all of the high school and college graduates. Shout out to all of you and to your parents who truthfully worked and helped to make it all possible. And even if you got a free ride, there was a parent there or someone who was a parental substitute who helped to encourage you to, and help you to understand the importance of education because education is important. In fact, Candace, that's something my mom always said to me, "Education is one thing that nobody can take from you." Once you got it, you got it, okay?
Our mothers said the same things, Gwen.
Absolutely, absolutely. Education is important. And you know what makes it equally so is the fact that especially if you're a person of color, for many years you were not able to get educated. It was against the law for you to get educated. So it's just like the voting thing, you know? For years and years and years, many were not able to vote, people of color as well as women. And now that we're able to get a good education, now that we're able to vote, we truly should be taking advantage of those things. So shout out to you all and those who graduated from high school and now you're of the age and you've registered to vote, super shout out to you as well. Because an important part of education, an important part of community is your participation, your involvement in local government, government of higher levels, your civic engagement. That is important, that is an important part of your life. So shout out to you all in regards to that. And shout out to our school boards and those who are working to make education even better than it is, okay? I did the check before Bean even came to, works just fine. Before he even came in, you know, I'm right on top of it tonight. Hallelujah. I'm gonna even do a shout out for those listeners, hopefully nobody turned their radio off or anything, but I'm doing a shout out for our president, President Barack Obama. And for all that, you know, he's going through all that that's going on, I tell you, he needs our prayers, our country needs our prayers. And I'll just say this and then I'll move on, that what we're hearing about, I remember hearing about some of the same stuff happening under other presidents and geez, wow, can't get them one way, you try to get them another, but shout out to him as well. And to all of our listeners, we thank you for not only listening, but we thank you for caring enough to want to get informed. And if you go further getting informed, you move on into the action phase, thank you, thank you, thank you for that as well. So shout out to you. And I'm sure I will be changing this poll soon, but the query that asks you, if courtesy is important to you, if you think things are worse in the past decade in terms of people being courteous to each other, kind to one another and the like than they were a decade ago, go on the website, www.gwenhamandtruth.com so you can let me know whether, you know, you feel that things have changed, not for the better but for the worse. We do want to hear that. I personally think it has, but you know, you may think things are hunky dory as we used to say. Does that take you back Candace? My guest tonight is Candace Langford and Candace is a member of the Volusia County School Board. And Candace, you've been a member of the school board for how many years now?
Since 2002, so this is my third term.
Wow. So, and you're probably, at this point, longest term in serving?
Yes.
With the experience of having served on the school board, you are the longest term person there. And there is, there's something that they call institutional knowledge. Because you've been at a place or at a place in time, you know, for a while, there is some knowledge that you acquire. If some of that, been there, done that, but the other part about that I think Candace is that you've seen things change over time, you've seen things change for the better and for the worse. You've had an opportunity to watch the school system in terms of the rules, the regulations you guys have to abide by, coming from the legislature and, you know, Department of Education and the like. Have things improved? And if not, you know, in what areas have they not, in what areas have they? Because I can remember when parental involvement, though never at a high, high level, where it was at a pretty good level, you know, where you had several people who were involved. I can recall even legislators who were pro-education, you know, you didn't have to help them win in order for them to be supportive. You know, I can just remember a time when education was, as we were saying earlier, the most, one of the most important things that you could do, get an education. And I don't sense a lot of that right now. How do you feel about that?
Well, that's a big question and one of the things you touched upon is parental involvement because it's key to any student's success or any guardian's involvement and that's something that we really work hard at, but it isn't as successful at times as we would like. When you talk about the priority of education, I have to give the Daytona Chambers a big could do, a shout out because their platform this year was education and they really tried to help with what we call the district cost differential, which is something that really impacts the funding for Volusia County. Just for an example, everyone is talking about the bonus to education this time, $1 billion, it's wonderful. And Volusia County received 16, I think, 16.6 million dollars additional revenue. Out of that 10.2 is designated for instructional personnel raises. There's another, a couple of million here and there for categoricals. So really, a lot of it is already tied up. But the state average for an increase in revenue was 6.1% across the board, state average. Volusia's is 6.17, I mean 4.17, excuse me, almost two percentage points less because of the formula that's embedded in the way that the state funds education. And it's very disheartening to see this gap in funding grow and especially impacting Volusia County. We are the biggest losers over the 10-year period. When I was first elected in 2002 is when they had a revamping of the Florida Education Funding Program. And at that point in time, they reworked this formula called the district cost differential. It went into effect in 2004 and every year it's gotten more and more difficult for Volusia County to keep pace with our surrounding counties. So over this 10-year period, well, not quite, since it went into effect, Volusia County has gotten 97.5 million dollars less than if the formula had been equated fairly. It's, for every student, there is a set fee and it's called the base student allocation. And that's what you get for the get-go unless you're like Volusia County, instead of getting one dollar per dollar, like so, let's say, argument sake, it's $6,000 per student. Well, if you have a district cost differential of one, then you get $6,000. But if you're like Volusia County, you get .967, you only get $967 per student. And the accumulation of that over time has been significant and the resources nearly $8 million a year. So that's one of the things that has been difficult. But I also, some of the positives about education is I think that we are trying to go away from a mass production kind of industrial model of what grownups think students need and really trying to mass customize per student. So we have a lot more differentiated instruction in our classrooms and our teachers are working harder than ever. I can't tell you how hard and how dedicated our teachers are because they have all these variables going on in their classroom. They have more autistic children, they have more children with learning needs. They also have, you know, the vast majority which are still at their level, but yet they're juggling a whole lots of things that are going on with new evaluation systems that are mandated by the state and by revenue coming to the state with race to the top grants, all these kinds of things. So there's some real good learning and teaching going on in our classrooms, but also the mandates from the state and the resources there to fulfill the mandates are not there to the need that I, to the level that I would like to see.
And at the same time, you also see where those dollars are being, that you did and were getting are being funneled off in terms of funding alternative education.
Oh my goodness, you just hit, two things came up. We had a budget workshop on Tuesday and two new items that are going to funnel education dollars away from Volusia County. One is virtual school. Now, we do have Volusia Virtual where if that student, and also the state requires that every student in order to graduate must take one virtual course. So, but, so we do have Volusia Virtual, but there's also Florida Virtual and there are other virtual companies that want to set up and do this kind of thing.
And that's online learning?
Online learning. What we do in Volusia County is a blended model. So you have online, but you also have the teacher. So it's really, all the literature, the academic literature really shows that this is the best way because not everyone can do an online and be as productive and learn as much as they can with that oversight of a teacher. But what the state has done for the first time ever is not pay us for students that take virtual school. So right now that's, we're projecting a loss of millions of dollars in that direction, also for the first time. And it's really kind of ingenious of the state because our partners in the community college, dual enrollment, has gotten very, very popular. And we think it's a great idea.
Absolutely.
It's a great idea.
And for our listeners, students get to, while they're in high school, also take college courses?
Correct.
That count toward college?
We have some students that actually graduate from high school and also have their AA degree.
Yes.
It's pretty amazing and it's wonderful. Now, the county always pays for the books for the students. So that has always been a half a million dollars that the Volusia County School Board has always put towards us. But the community college is saying, as this program gets more and more popular, they're not getting the full compensation for that, so now they want to be paid for those. So that means those students that are dual enrolled, the school district is going to lose money and the community college is going to get, well Daytona State, I think it's about $78 per credit hour, you know, each, most courses are at least three credit hours. So again, that's a loss of, I believe, of one point, projecting from last year, 1.5 million dollars that before the state used to say, "We'll cover those costs."
And went to Volusia County schools.
And, but then the community colleges with some justification are saying, "But wait, we're..." So they divided and conquered. So now they have the Volusia County School Board or any school district now trying to fight over the same funds that the community college or now, or the states. You know, so it's really disingenuous because there are lots of ways that they cut funding to the school districts that we've never had to deal with before. We never had to track, we knew how many students were taking virtual school. And by the way, they will only pay for the virtual students if they pass the course. So that's another wrinkle. And there's no tracking. So if a student is taking a Florida Virtual, now we know Volusia Virtual, we, there's no tracking because there are different tracking numbers and the state has no information, we're not getting that information about how many of our students are going into Florida Virtual. So that's another unknown within our budget coming up this year. So between that and the state, you know, there are now Daytona State Colleges, it's going to be a fiscal impact that we had not had to contend with prior to this end of legislative session.
And of course, you mentioned evaluation. We know that the legislation was passed, not this year, last year, that the teachers now have to be evaluated and tested on the coursework and the students, of course, they're leaving from FCAT and going to, what is it, Common Core?
Common Core, yes. But that's 14, 15. And here's, here's another interesting little, because it's all happening so quickly and the Common Core is supposed to be done all online. And so we really, none of the funds have come forward yet to really equip all the schools to do all the testing online. And so when you look at that, if you have a big media center filled with computers, I mean, you have to shut down the media center, you have to have proctors, you have to have all kinds of things. And think about this, think, 3rd graders are going to be taking courses on computer. Now, I don't know about you and maybe it has something to do with age. I can do some things on a computer, but if I'm going to write something or edit something, I like to have it in front of me. I don't, I don't feel, now that-
Yeah, I like hard copies too.
But that might be generational.
For the young people, yes, yes, they're used to.
But I will tell you, Orange County, we belong to the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition and Orange County Public Schools did a presentation, I believe in January, and they did a control group and another group that they gave a test on the computer and then pen and pencil. And there was a 20-point difference on the kids that took it and pen and pencil scored higher than the ones on the computer.
Oh wow.
Because there's a learning curve to testing with those computers, especially with math because you have to show your work. You know, I think they're used to kind of reading and testing on a computer, but not the math thing was something different.
Yeah, yeah.
So these are all things that we have to prepare our students for and our teachers, you know, because our teachers are not used to giving all this kind of testing on computers either. So it's a real change and shift for our school districts.
And I can imagine, if you've got to run the different, because the years that have to, the grade, grade levels that have to take that, I mean, you're talking about almost testing and shifts depending upon the number of computers you have there if it's online.
Exactly.
Oh wow.
Think of schools as big as, you know, Spruce Creek is our largest high school with 2,800 students, University High has something like 2,700 students, Deland High, 2,500 students. So now you're giving all those students tests on a computer. I mean, you, you don't have 2,800 computers.
Right, absolutely.
So it's gonna, it's gonna be interesting. Now, the Commissioner of Education, Commissioner Tony Bennett, not the singer, has said he has a Plan B. So we don't know exactly what Plan B is yet. I don't know if the Department of Education, the state of Florida knows what Plan B is, but the legislature was asked repeatedly, especially by the superintendents in the state of Florida, to please just, we want to go to Common Core, we appreciate Common Core, we understand what they're trying to do, but just slow down the process so we can prepare people to come forward with, especially with the testing part of this. And the House and the Senate did not do anything to slow this train down.
Yeah, I remember reading that. Explain to our listeners, because they hear this a lot, Common Core, Common Core, Common Core. What is Common Core?
I will do this to the best of my ability and I'm not sure that I have all the answers, but I think there's one thing that has to be really understood. Common Core standards is not a federal government initiative. I want that out there, it's not federal government. This was done by the Governors Association of our nation as well as the Commissioners of Education. And it goes back to when No Child Left Behind first came out. It was a bipartisan group, I remember Ted Kennedy and President Bush, Senator Kennedy were both signing that and moving it forward. When the first results came out, the state of Mississippi showed something like 89% of their 4th graders passed their Mississippi State Standards Test. 89% were on grade level. The state of Florida only had 17% of their 4th graders on the state level. So what does that say? Oh, you're not comparing apples to apples. So there's a difference in the rigor of the test. So this was, this was being blown out of, as this continued, it was more and more apparent, especially some states, when they saw that it was going to impact their graduation rates, it was going to impact revenue flow to them. So there was some dumbing down of the tests. Never happened in Florida. We always ratcheted it up. So when they looked at this, they said, "What can we do?" Because there is one standardized test that it's given nationally called NATE, National Assessment for Educational Progress, a NATE test that is given across the country. And the state that came closest to matching their state results on their FCAT to the NATE testing was Massachusetts. And they were only a little bit above half. Florida was down in the 20 percentiles, but we were still higher than some of the others when you looked at comparing the national test that was given to each state's test. And so the governors said, "How can, you know, we want to have an educated, an educated population. What do we have to do? We have to have some sort of standards that we could come forward with across this nation." And so the governors came together and each state is working collectively within, we're doing a test called the PARC test. It's called the Partnership for Assessment for Readiness for College and Career. There are 20 some odd states in that, 46 states have signed on by the way. The other, there's another group, another consortium doing, I think it's called Smarter Balanced, it's a different way the tests are done. But there's, so what this country is trying to do, when you compare us to Finland and Singapore and India and China, which is now universally acknowledged, when you look at curriculum, and I just want to say, our curriculum is already pretty much standardized because of our textbook companies. They sell to four states, New York, Texas, Florida and California, and all the other states pretty much buy those textbooks. So when you talk about a national curriculum, it's already there. It's just setting the standards within that curriculum.
Right.
So when, when they came forward with this, I just lost my point, oversight.
About the standards that they came up with?
So the international standards in the United States, it was said that we had standards that were a mile wide and an inch deep. When you look at these other countries, the standards were much narrower, but they were a mile deep. So there was much more in-depth rigor associated with the standards. Instead of having, let's say arbitrarily 100 standards, there might only be 10. I'm saying, I'm being, I'm just pulling those numbers out of my hat.
And I think they have a dozen, right?
Right, yes, yes. So it's much narrower, so I think in the long run, it'll be better. I'm a proponent, the state of Florida's a proponent, our Commissioner of Education is, but there is pushback. On both the left and the right against Common Core standards, for some similar reasons and for some not so similar reasons. ALEC, the American Legislative Exchange Council, the Koch Brothers Fund are against it. They came out against it because they're saying it's national standards. There are other people that are saying that the curriculum isn't up to snuff, that it really isn't as rigorous or as tested as it should be. There's a very articulate, well thought of, on the left writer by the name of Diane Radich and she worked, actually in, as an NYU professor and in George Bush's Department of Education and she was one of the architects of No Child Left Behind and was a real believer in testing our students and making sure the rigor and relevance was in her classroom. She has since come out against Common Core standards because she said, "There's no literature, there's no testing, there's no academic authenticity to what we're doing. There's no proof. There should be a pilot first." So you have both ends of a political spectrum that are saying, "Wait a minute, hold this up. This isn't what we want to do."
But we're going forward.
We're going forward. And, but again, I do want to emphasize, this was initiated by the states, not by the federal government.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. So, so the bottom line is that we're going forward and as you've said, we're a part of the project that actually is looking at career preparation.
Correct, career and college, college and career.
Yes, okay. And I believe, I heard the Commissioner of Education Bennett mention about science and-
STEM education.
STEM education, right.
Science, technology, engineering and math.
Right, which you, yes, which you will hear a lot of, not just academicians, but the governor and others talk about, even business people talk about, that's what we're working toward and the legislators and everyone else. They see those four areas as being key to us being able to be major players when it comes to the workforce availability and bringing business to the area and jobs, jobs, jobs.
Absolutely. And one of the things Volusia County has been really on the forefront of is our academies. And we partner with Embry-Riddle, with UCF, with Stetson, we have these academies and that's, again, the customization of education for students that I'm talking about. But academies are expensive. You know, there, you need lots of equipment. There's an engineering academy at Deland High, we took the Deland Chamber of Commerce, they had no idea the West Volusia, that this was going on in this high school. And, but yet the materials, they couldn't run one of the plastic compression things because they didn't have the consumable materials in order to get it to do what it needs to do. So as good as these programs are, and I absolutely believe that's the way we need to go, they take a great deal of resources in order to get the students where they need to be and it's with national accreditation. So even the students that may not come out college-ready, there's also national accreditations that go along with this so they could come out of high school and get a job.
And share some of the other of those schools that, academies that are there, because I know you have one for law, I know you have one for health, I guess you'll get, yes?
We have, we have finance academies at Spruce Creek and University High, we have robotics academies at our schools, we have graphic arts academies, we have a EMT Academy at Pine Ridge, we have, oh, we have 30 different academies. Now, what we try and do, which we have been very successful at, is have academy on the east side and the west side. We have culinary academies that are just absolutely in-
And the university one you have in Orange City is just phenomenal, I've just eaten some of their food.
And Seabreeze, right? Oh my gosh, they're still mainland, they do, they do, these students learn. And then we have construction academies at four of our high schools and I just went to one at Deland High because I live in Deland. They, if anyone wants an Adirondack chair, what they make is absolutely amazing and all the lifeguard towers that you see on Daytona Beach up and down are made at the Deland High School. And so these students are learning a trade, they are, they're doing amazing things. I would love to take you for a tour, they just do amazing things over there. Um, I would love to take you for a tour. They, they just do amazing things over there.
And, uh, what, what our listeners need to know is at these academies, the, the students are taking coursework tied to-
Oh, absolutely.
As well as some of the hands-on.
They have to know geometry. They have to know all kinds of math to, to be in the Bulldog Construction. And then if they graduate from that, they get a national certification. So there are two of those construction academies on the east side and two on the west side. So they're, they're equally, I think, I believe New Smyrna Beach also has one. They've done some amazing things down there as well.
Well, absolutely. And the one that deals with robotics or, uh, and I think even IT.
Right.
They, they won awards nationwide.
That's at mainland Creek and University High. They're, they're just amazing.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you know what else they have at the finance academy? And, um, they had the new, new dean of, um, of the business school at Stetson, a new associate dean. So I took them to the finance academies at Spruce Creek and University High. They were blown away, cause they haven't been in high schools in that time. And the University High's program is newer. Creek's is more established. And in fact, Spruce Creek students go and take a trip to Wall Street every year. Not only that, but University High, they actually have Space Coast Credit Union that's run by students in the school. And I mean, and they are hired. They have to go through an interview process. Now, it's only open two or three days a week during lunch. But nevertheless, these students run it, they interview, they do all the things. They open up accounts, everything. And then they have internships if they want during the summer at a regular branch. So, um, and I know Space Coast wants to expand that. They've just put an ATM in the school. So I mean, all these kinds of things, again, here are professors at, at a premier business school in our community. We're just amazed at what our students are learning and doing.
And as you're saying, all of these things though, take funding, they, they require monies. Now, let's get into the budget and what you guys are, you, you've, you've already stated about, uh, you know, funds that the legislature has provided and, and it wasn't, I know in the paper, newspaper article said, but it's not enough. Uh, millions of dollars is not enough. Uh, based on cuts that you guys have, that you've had to accommodate over the years. And then you've had additional loss of funds because of the, having to meet the student ratio.
Size reduction, right. So we, we received sixteen point six million additional funds. And, and ten point four of that is allocated to our instructional raises. Then instructional materials are point two and then teacher lead increase point three. So that gave us five point seven, um, that, that we could do to our budget deficit. But this is a question I have. So we have ten point four for instructional personnel. Does that mean none of our other employees will receive any? I means, I can't imagine that being part of the conversation. Then we have, um, we don't know what the virtual enrollment is going to be. We don't know with dual enrollment. So those are funds that heretofore had not come out of our budget, but now will. We do have, uh, we still, at the end of the day, after talking about all these things, and I, I know, uh, as you know, we had that tough vote the other night on outsourcing. We still have a six point seven million dollar deficit after, um, going through all our, another, take another million out of utility savings, um, another, uh, one point four million out of retirement savings. And then we have, uh, a few other things that still, um, that we still facing six point seven million dollar deficit. Now, um, we do have, uh, we do have, um, our, 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 our balance fund, you know, our undesignated balance. So that will, um, be taken into consideration. State law says that we must have a three percent balance. Our board policy says we want a five percent balance. And so that, we're over that, so that will, that will give us some leeway. But those are funds that are non-recurring. So once we take that out of the unencumbered balance, we are-
What do you do next year?
What do you do next year, exactly?
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then we have to meet the classroom size reduction amendment. So that was one of the increases that, you know, this year, we didn't meet it. And we are going to need a hundred and three teachers, knowing that. Yes, we, we're going to take another hundred and three teachers in order to be sure that we meet the requirements of the classroom size.
Cause I noticed you said that even with the cuts, you, you all had decided you would not cut, um, is it the instructional staff?
Right. And there's no, we're not gonna, and we're going to need an additional hundred and three, um, teachers. And that will come to about five point three million dollars in additional funds that we need as a result of that. But that's factored into the overall budget. So it was, that leaves us with six point seven million. So a lot of this stuff, um, health insurance, our health insurance this year, uh, it was originally projected to go up nine point five percent, but now it, we've worked it down with some plan modifications to five point five percent. So, um, and then the FRS, uh, the Florida Retirement System, the way, even though our employees give three percent of it, there's still going, there's still costs that the district must, um, uh, maintain. And that's going to be five point nine million. So that was all factored into our budget.
Your role.
Yeah, our overall budget.
Um, the custodial contract, uh, because two members voted against it, three members voted for it. Uh, what were the driving issues in regard to, uh, to going, to privatizing that particular, um, uh, group of employees as opposed to another group? Of course, you can, you don't wanna go to your instructional, but is there anything left?
Well, the, that, that was a really difficult, um, decision. And it was a really difficult, you know, some of the other things we could have done were furlough all employees, so everyone would take a cut in pay. Well, no, it'd be more than a day.
Oh.
For six million dollar savings, it'd be more than a day. And, or furlough people or layoff, I said furlough, layoff people. I think the, the driving cost, uh, when we sent out the request for proposal, the RFP, what we all said, and even though at that point in time it was a three to two vote, is we wanted to see if this disruption to our, um, to our, uh, school district was going to be, um, fiscally possible.
Right. Are you really gonna save money worthwhile, I mean?
There were thirty-three firms that asked for the RFP. Eighteen, um, came to the pre-bid conference and five submitted bids. So it was very competitive. On the team that, um, that reviewed the bids, we had three principals. We had, um, Reverend Ricardo Spencer as community representative, Russ Tysinger, Director of Maintenance and Operations, and Stephanie Weaver, Director of Budget. And our principals were from Bonnie Giarfis from Longstreet Elementary, Dr. Cheryl Solano, principal from mainland high, and Leslie Sallow Robinson, principal of Henson Middle. And then one other assistant principal, Marisol Rubio from Taylor Middle High. So they went through the bids and asked questions. And what was so compelling, um, Dr. Solano, Solano said she had two questions. She said, are you gonna take care of my guys? And am I still gonna be able to have a school look the way I want it to look? And, cause we asked questions, because with a six million dollar savings and thirty million over five years, everyone was saying, is this too good to be true?
Yeah.
You know, where are they gonna cut? Where are they gonna cut? And so those were, and well, there's no, what they, they did a couple of interesting things and they were, this was one of the things that the, everyone on the committee spoke to us. They said, first of all, Airmark was the only one would match the salaries of our employees. And they said, even some of the salaries of the more senior people were outside of their wage, wage structure. They were going to meet them, mean that. They also said, even though they won't have a defined benefit plan, they will have a 401K from day one and they will match up to three percent what the employees put in. And see, our employees are already putting in three percent to MRS. The one major change was individual healthcare will cost more. It went from about twenty dollars a month to two hundred. But if they were on a family plan, it was less. So if they were paying insurance for their families, it was less. Is this a perfect situation? No, absolutely. But I do think I have a fiscal responsibility. This was a fair deal, but this also will keep dollars in the classroom. They also said, every one of our employees that had a, a good evaluation, and I think we have four hundred and twenty-five custodians currently, um, working for us, that everyone will be hired. Everyone will have a job if they have a good evaluation.
Right. And that, you know, you kind of expect that, I mean.
Yes. Well, so there were lots of positives from the Airmark. And, and, and they said, when they looked at the two companies, it was GCA and Airmark that both, um, were the finalists, and they brought them in to interview them. They said, the feeling that they had after talking, hearing the two presentations, was GCA was corporate, that was it, they were gonna do this. Where Airmark said, we want to have your custodians remain part of the family. They want, if they can at all possible, stay at the schools. But one of the things they will do, and I, we asked that question. So what, suppose something happens at school X, how? Well, they said, prior to outsourcing, they had to give the custodians two weeks' notice to move or do something different where they're scheduled. Where now, they'll say, hey, sorry, you have to leave school X and go take care of school Y. So there's more flexibility and there's no collective bargaining. So those two areas is plus the healthcare and, and the 401K and the benefit side is where they're making the difference.
Oh.
Oh, but the salary will stay the same, but of course with, with healthcare, it will make a difference. But one of the things we did ask, how does Obamacare factor into this? Because they are at the lower end of, of the, um, wage scale. How, will that be able to supplement? Will that be able to step in? The problem with that, and I'm answering my own question, is our state legislature turned down all the federal money. Which is an amazing, I mean, we had a conversation at one of the Tiger Bay, and I believe you were there. Where, where, um, the CEO of, of Florida Healthcare, not Florida Healthcare, um, Florida Hospital, Darryl Toll, said he couldn't believe they were turning down the money. That, that he said it was just unbelievable.
Hospitals supported that. Let me say very quickly, you're listening to Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards. Uh, my guest, of course, is Candace Langford with Volusia County School System. And we're talking about education, we're talking about the school system. We're talking about issues related to getting our young people the quality education that they deserve and ensuring that, uh, things are, are done, decisions are made, you know, in the best possible, for the best possible result, uh, for our young people, which also impacts our community. And as I'm sure Candace will join me in saying, it impacts them, uh, the community economically. I remember, um, I think it was Linda Merrill who first made that connection or somebody did, uh, in this area, that, you know, a lot of times, business people don't necessarily think of education or anyone else as being an economic engine for a community. But it is, but it is. Uh, it really directly impacts your workforce. It directly impacts, um, the, the salary levels many times as well. It directly impacts what the employers look for, um, to an extent when they come to an area. So education is key and education is important. When you look at, um, the economics of what parents are having to deal with now, Candace, and, you know, some of them, a lot of them are still unemployed and a lot in our area are underemployed, even if they are employed. Uh, and the salary levels are not that great for the majority of, of people as well. And you look at something, uh, that you guys are reconsidering with the dress code. What are you thinking?
I, I, you, you read the paper this morning. Here's what I think. I think at the end of the day, it'll be cheaper for parents if their children have uniforms. However, if there are those children, and we do have, and those parents can't afford them, I feel that the district must come forward and have, uh, a fund that will provide uniforms for all children that can't afford them. And just, when I was talking about uniforms, I was talking khaki pants or shorts for guys or jeans. Now, every child you know has a pair of jeans.
Right.
And then a collared shirt with, in the school color or white or navy blue or something like that. So, and I think after the first year, that would be where the biggest expense would be. But after the first year, kids go up in size and then if they're gently used, some of them might be, you could then have, start stocking some of those other things. But I absolutely believe that if the child can't, you don't want anyone to feel different or- And, and think about it this now, Gwen, I go into stores sometimes with an eye, um, to look at clothes to see. And I'm telling you, there's very little there for parents to choose from that aren't too short or too something. And I, I thought, where are the retailers? I mean, Seminole County is, has the same dress code. We have the same dress code, Seminole County. Flagler's just gone to uniforms. And I called my friend Colleen Cochrane up at Flagler to ask her, I said, how's the uniform thing? I just called her this morning. She said it's going great. So we haven't had a long conversation about it. I just think at the end of the day, it's gonna cut out headaches for parents. It's going to be cheaper because you, you don't have to, and you can have the fun Friday once a month.
Right, right, like they do in the workplace.
Place, yeah.
And you know, and I'm, I'm truly not opposed to that. I should've said, this is WLE thirteen eighty AM on your radio down in Armored Beach, Florida, a live radio. Because I read some of the comments when this, the issue came up before. And, uh, when you say it would save money, what listeners need to understand is that the, the other, you know, different styles that the kids wear, you know, you look at some of those torn pants and stuff, and they may have paid a hundred dollars for those pants, you know? So, uh, so it would save money if you're then having to buy something that really you can almost not quite get off the shelf, but almost. Uh, and it cuts down on the extraneous types of things that the kids look at and have to deal with because, you know, my pants cost a hundred dollars and yours only costs twenty. You know, you went, I went to Dillars or whatever and you went to Kmart. You know, that type of stuff that really detracts from, uh, the attentiveness of the students in terms of the classroom. So I, so I understand that and, and I read then the other side where the parents were saying, no, it won't help them because they'll still have to buy the other stuff because the kids won't wear the uniforms when they go out and do their social stuff with the kids. They, they're gonna want clothes for that and then they'll want to have a separate set of clothes for school. So I, so I know you guys were kinda trying to weigh both sides of the issue because, you know, uh, there are varying opinions on that. But I do fall in agreement with what you've said, that at the end of the day, I think having the uniforms really does help, really does help.
When you think about it, every private school, it has uniforms. I mean, it's, and so when they talk about students not having any individuality, does that mean students that go to private schools are not, you know, have any creativeness? I, that's, and even our charter schools require uniforms. They also require parent participation. You know, if you, if some of the charter schools, uh, if there's a waiting list, you know, they, they can be, I asked, um, Ivy Hawn, I think, has a, a waiting list. Do those parents have to, do you give so many hours, you know, a semester? So, uniforms are not out of the norm. I mean, private schools have been doing this for, for decades. So, um, and we, I, I just find it, it'd be easier. I can remember my daughter, I don't wanna wear that, you know, when she was little and just-
I know my niece did the same thing. That's why, why I don't pass.
No, not uniforms. I mean, she didn't wanna wear whatever we had chosen, because it was itchy or something. Where I would have much preferred to have a uniform and saying, and you take the argument off the table.
Right, right. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. In terms of the budget too, and I have to mention this because I had you and your finance person on the show uh, prior to the referenda, uh, that voters had a chance to vote on to, to tax themselves an additional amount of money for property tax to help fill, and it would not have fully filled, but it would have helped to, um, And it would not have fully filled, but it would have helped to forestall some of the financial issues and woes that, that you guys are dealing with now. But that, you know, it, it didn't happen. And even though the Chamber of Commerce came out in favor, a lot of people did, News Journal didn't, but... I know, you know, it would be easy to do this, to say, "Ah, ah, ah, see if you had done it." And that was kind of what I was saying in each county, where they didn't do it, and then the parents came back and said, "Oh, but you're, why are they closing this school? And why are they doing this, and why are they doing that?" And then, you know, why do people have this idea that you guys who, yeah, you receive an income for serving as a school board member, but why do they think you kind of make up stuff? You know, just to try to take money out of the pockets of people, when what you're trying to do is, is fund the, the best quality edu... That's my opinion, that's what I've seen too. Best quality education that, again, that our young people deserve.
Well, when we lost over 200,000 votes cast, we only lost by 900 votes. And it was, and I know there were so many of us, like our, our district staff worked so hard, the school board members. I know Andrew Swar, the VTO president, really worked hard at trying to get this passed. I think there were lots of reasons why it didn't pass, you know? The what ifs, you know, what if we had started sooner? What if the News Journal had supported us? What if, just there wasn't so much coming down on our, our school family all at once? I, but you can't go back. It didn't pass, and you move, it passed in Seminole, you know, and they had...
And Seminole was already getting more money. They actually benefit from this formula that you're talking about, getting more money in Volusia County. You mentioned that.
And they had Stan Van, Van, the coach, the magic coach, was their spokesman, that really had children in, in public school, and said, "Listen, they need this." And now there's even discussion, because the bill they passed at Seminole said up to 1 mil. So they're discussing that they might not even be, I mean, it just is, it's very interesting. The end of the day, the voters said no, so you have to go back and sharpen your pencil. And that's also something I want to talk about, the custodial contract. Because I've gotten a couple of questions about, "Well, why didn't you do this sooner?" I think it was a very, very competitive time to outsource. If, I think Volusia County has always been the canary in the mine. We closed schools before Seminole or Revard did. We have laid off paraprofessionals, they're talking about this somewhere else, that we took them out of the kindergarten classrooms long before anyone else did. We've made so many cuts. People, when I tell them we share principals at 10 of our schools, five principals, their mouths drop open. So we're, we have done so many things ahead of the curve. I think these companies that bid for Volusia County, just a little backtracking, really sharpened their pencil, thinking, "Okay, we're going to go into Volusia County, we're gonna do a bang-up job." Because only about two or three other school districts have outsourced custodial. I know Duval is one, and Collier, and I think there might be one more. And, and they're, they're seeing this as a potential market entry level. And so, when you look at all these things that have happened, again, Volusia County has been in the forefront of, of making the difficult decisions. I, I can tell you, the most difficult decision I have ever made was closing schools. I mean, and we had three open houses in high school auditoriums where people shouting and yelling and...
I know, I was at one of them.
I know, it was, it was, and I understand. Again, we made the decision, what was for the best interest of our students. And this is a continuation of that. So the, the electorate said no to this, so we had to go back and sharpen our pencils. And so, when you, actions have consequences. And the financial impact on our, our community, when all these factors come to be, the district cost differential, we'll see what the, the outcome, I think, with the salaries staying the same for our custodial staff, even though healthcare will be more, it will mitigate the impact. Nevertheless, we are, they're gonna hire more people than we have. They're gonna go over 500, we had 488 or something. So they're gonna hire more people as well. So it's, it's not just one-sided, and we need to look at, at the best way we could keep dollars in the classroom. And I can tell you, going, this is one of the best budget workshops. We've had five now, I think, no, it was six, that I've ever seen. I mean, we are, and someone brought up, I believe, Ida Wright brought up zero-based budgeting. Our district staff already does that. There's no rollover from finance, or curriculum, or anything to the next year. The district staff already does zero-based budgeting. The schools don't do that, because so much of theirs is fundraising, they get limited amount of money. And a lot of them count on having that rollover to go into the next year to do some other initiative. So, yes, our schools might not do it, but our district certainly does do zero-based budgeting. So they have to justify expenditures at every line, and they start, and there's no rollover. So everything goes back in the pot when, when you start over. And they're looking at a 5% cut, again, across the board at district staff. So it's, it's significant.
One of the last questions, I don't know, I might have another one, but are not questioned as much as issued. Margaret Smith, Superintendent Smith, to me, is one of the best. And, you know, I've seen others, I've been around, I've heard about others in some other areas as well. And you know this thing about, "Let's get her fired," or whatever. She has made decisions that I know in talking with her that have not been easy, just as you've said about the school board, that have not, decisions that have not been easy decisions. But her job is to look at the entirety of the school system and make the best recommendations that she can to each of you. And then you give her the marching orders, and she does it the best way that she can. I mean, I, I've already did kind of a prelude of, but, but what do you think, for you?
I think Margaret Smith is one of the best superintendents in the state. And I can tell you, she has the ear of the governor, she has the ear of the Commissioner of Education.
Yes, he said that too, at the meeting with the chamber.
And she represents us, and really does her homework all the time. She's a, she's steady at the helm, do I always agree with everything? We have lots of background chats, where we have discussions about certain aspects of, of school. And, and I know she has that with all the school board members, because of Sunshine. I think there are a couple of things that are, I know one of the people behind, you know, fire Margaret Smith is a disgruntled employee that is no longer with us. Another one is I can tell you, someone that I had dealings with quite some time, that is just, for lack of a better word, an unhappy person. And just not, and, and to my knowledge, her children are no longer in school, even here in Volusia County. So I think you have to take some of these things, not, there, there's more behind the curtain than meets the eye.
But she really has done an outstanding job.
I, I certainly believe that. And works harder, as hard as anyone, she doesn't require more of anyone else than she requires of herself. So I, um...
I think sometimes people may look at her calm demeanor, and, you know, or, or listen to a response that she gives, and, you know, and, and not see or hear what, what I see and hear, because, again, I've been exposed to others, that she really, she does her homework.
Absolutely.
You know, and she's always looking for alternatives. She works even with, and, and, you know, the union people have said the same thing, Swar, that she works, that she goes above and beyond to try to come to a happy medium.
Right now, she's going to all the schools, first of all, all the elementary schools, to meet with all the, the teachers, you know, and so she's trying to get to all the schools. There's also, just for your listeners and for you, the Central Florida Partnership, on June 5th, down at the Hyatt Hotel in Orlando, is, is having a, a, not, well, like a seminar on Common Core. She's at, she's been asked to be on the Reactor panel. So that's June 5th. If you go on the Central Florida Partnership, you have to have reservations to, to go to this. But I think it'd be well worth it. She's been, she's one of four superintendents that were asked to go up and meet with the governor and talk about holding back some of this onslaught of Common Core and the testing. I mean, so she is very well respected around the state, and she does her homework. Do I always agree with Dr. Smith? Absolutely not, nor does she agree with me.
But if you both always agree, then one of you has a need.
Exactly.
I heard that, you know?
And that's exact, and so you have discussions about, about ways to look at things. So, and it's, it's a tough job. You know, when you, you look at this, people make remarks about her salary. Think about this, she has 80 school, you know, sites, 73 of which are schools, and then other sites, plus 60 some odd students, 60,000 some odd students. She makes...
And I say it's the population of Daytona Beach.
Right. And when, when you think about that, look at what community college presidents make with their campuses. Look at what CEOs make with lots. She is, she is the head of the biggest employer of Volusia County. So I, I...
And it is a business. I mean, we care about students and everything, but it is a business when it comes down to it.
It is, it is very multifaceted. Because you have to know, there's the, the politics involved with it, there's the academics involved with it, there's the, there's the transportation, the security. I mean, when, after Sandy Hook, immediately, we got to, our school district got together with every police, city police chief, and, and sheriff, coming together, working together to have a plan, making sure that all the bases were covered. So these things are coming at you all the time, besides the legislature. You know, in constant communication with Senator David Simmons, Senator Thrasher, Senator Euclid, trying to get the DCD, at least a study, and if not a study, at least another supplement. And, and, you know, working very hard on it. Representative David Santiago, Representative David Hood, were trying to work very hard. At the end of the day, it didn't happen. But Dr. Smith was leading that charge.
And I know Representative Dwayne Taylor has always been involved.
Well, represent, that one, you know, that one without saying, you know that.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So, yes, Representative Taylor is a huge supporter of, of the school system, and I always thank him for that.
Absolutely. And, and finally, since you hit upon it, are the schools safe, as safe as they can be?
I, I believe, I did a, a presentation at Stetson University with Dr. James Ramsey from Embry-Riddle University. And if you want to have a dynamic man come, he heads up Embry-Riddle's Homeland Security major. There are 250 students at Embry-Riddle taking Homeland Security as a major. Another 700 taking coursework. So he was fascinating, and he gave an overview of it. Our schools, at the end of the day, are very safe. These horrible incidents that happen in the Sandy Hooks or the Columbines, luckily are few and far between, but nevertheless, you can't go, you can't rest on your laurels. So there was a total review of all of our schools, what we needed to do, making sure, even though it isn't our policy, that every teacher locks their door. You know, just reemphasize, you're in that classroom with your children, every door is locked. You know, just different things, looking at access points of our, at our schools, all the... And if you look at our schools, everything from, when you look at a school like Seabreeze, which was built a long ago, it's very different from University High, which was built post-Columbine. So there's a, so you have to take those factors into consideration. So I, I believe our schools are safe. Just, I'll throw it out there, I don't believe our teachers should carry guns, and most of the teachers that I talk to do not want to carry guns.
Wonderful.
So that, so that is another point, just I'll throw out there.
Now, share the website that you have, and for those who, who would like to receive. I know there are emails that I get continually about, you know, what's happening with the school system in terms of budget and everything.
MyVolusiaSchools.org.
MyVolusiaSchools.org, okay, wonderful. And what is it that we can do in, in terms of support? Or, and I know every so often, I'm sure, more than every so often, you hear from people who say, "You guys shouldn't be doing this, or shouldn't be doing that." But what can those who really want to see this school system be the best it can be, do for Volusia County school system?
Number of things. One, email with ideas, always. We had, we had thousands of ideas about budget cuts that we looked at when this came about. But most importantly, take an hour a week and volunteer in a school. There's nothing more rewarding than volunteering, and it's one hour a week, be consistent, okay? That's the key thing, just don't, be consistent. And be, mentor a student. I had the most rewarding experience mentoring a young woman that told me she would never have gone to college if it wasn't for me. I mean, you, you talk about that kind of psychic income, you can't get anywhere else. There are so many seniors that live in our community, that look at our schools and really, maybe don't have an interest, and maybe they're more comfortable in a, in a elementary school. But I'll tell you, our high school kids need their wisdom. They, they need that touchstone of, "Hey, hey, kids," like, you know, not just, but just having that connection with people that care. And I think that's a big part. And do you know how many people were at our budget workshops on Tuesday? Maybe four.
Yeah, that's kind of part of the course, unfortunately.
Get involved, feel free to email your, your school board member, or any school board member. Keep that conversation going, but get in our schools and see the wonderful work that we do. We have amazing children, amazing children.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, people need to know that what, you know, the few that end up in the newspaper, you know, on the front page or whatever, about having done something that's not quite, not, not positive, but it's negative. You know, there are a small fraction to the, the vast number of young people that we have, K through 12, who are actually there doing what it is that they should be doing. And they have great parents who are ensuring that that's the case as well.
Absolutely.
So hats off to all of you, part of the school, school board, and to Superintendent Margaret Smith, to all of the teaching staff, instructional staff, all of the staff. And thank you for doing what you guys could do to make the transition for even the custodial staff go well.
And thank you for inviting me, I really appreciate having this opportunity.
I always enjoy having you on. You know, there are some people who just tell it like it is, and Candace is one of those people. So to all of you guys, shout out to each and every one of you. Be sure to join us every Thursday, starting at 6:15. And until next time, be informed, be empowered, stand tall for that which is right and truthful. This is Truth with Gwen Asma Edwards, Candace Langford, Volusia County School Board Member. And we're still standing tall, so you guys do the same, okay? And have a great week, and have a great Memorial Weekend as it comes forward as well. God bless.